We start our meeting with an invocation and a pledge. Would you like to stand with us? Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity you've given us to serve our community. Pray your blessings and your wisdom and guidance on this meeting tonight. Pray that you'll be with us as we travel home. In Jesus' name, amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm gonna go over the meeting procedures. Planning staff presents application requests to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal performs to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicants to make representations on requests and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allotted. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Also want to add that we'll address all questions from the podium. Any announcements? At this time, we want to recognize former chairman, Rob Gerst, for his service. Robert, we want to thank you for your years of service as the plan commissioner and as chairman. We appreciate all your diligent, hard work and care for the community.
I would like to say thank you, Joe, and I'd like to thank the rest of the commission. I've surely enjoyed our time together and like to welcome new members as well.
So, we appreciate that. At this time, we need to approve the minutes of our meeting on January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Do you hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January eighth, January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
A second. All in favor? Unanimous? We're now gonna start the public hearing. Our first item is SP dash two-five dash one dash six-seven-seven Sky Lane Road Site Plan. Consider site plan approval for the addition of a storage building for an existing tire and automotive service business. Property is owned Plant Development District, ZM four-zero-three-four, and is located at six-seven-seven Sky Lane Road, St. Simon's Island, parcel oh-four dash oh-two-nine-two-two. Chris Amos, CSCC, Inc., agent for Glen County Airport Commission, applicant. Staff?
Good evening. Christopher Carey, planner, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site plan approval for an addition to an existing business. The addition is twelve-hundred-ten square feet and the existing structure is thirty-three nine, three-thousand-three-hundred-ninety-seven square feet. Here is the site, located at six-seventy-seven Sky Lane Road. And there is a request for a variance to the tree ordinance due to FAA regulations on restricting of large tree plantings. Here is your site plan. As you see, it is on the rear of the structure with Sky Lane over here. And these are your possible motions. And Representative Chris Amos is here to speak on behalf of the airport.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward now?
Good evening. My name is Chris Amos. I'm with CSCC Incorporated and we are, we're representing the airport commission because this is, property is owned by the airport commission. JJ Tire is operating the business at this location and is asking to expand the building to provide additional shop area. And you can see the site plan that shows all the parking and everything else. Now, we did request a variance at the airport commission's request to not plant trees on the site because of the proximity of the airport. So, I can answer any questions you may have, hopefully.
Questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
We're gonna need you to speak up and enter the microphone, please.
Better. Is any public comment? If not, we'll close the public comment on this. Any discussion? There a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve SP two-five dash one, as presented.
A second motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? We'll move on to the next one. Let's. ZM dash two-four dash one-five, St. Simon's Christian School Rezone. Consider an amendment to a Plant Development District to add property and amend development standards. Property is owned Plant Development PD District, ZM one-seven-five-four. St. Simon's Christian School is located at one-zero-six-zero Cocina Circle and additional properties are located along Pine Street, St. Simon's Island, parcel zero-four dash one-four-four-zero-one, zero-four dash zero-five-zero-seven-nine, zero-four dash one-three-four-nine-two, zero-four dash five, zero-five-zero-seven-eight, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-one, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-two, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-three, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-four, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-five, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-six, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-seven, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-eight, zero-four dash one-five-zero-nine-nine, zero-four dash zero-five-one-zero-zero. Jake Clemmings, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for St. Simon's Christian School. Staff?
Yes, sir. Chris Carey, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a rezone or zoning amendment for St. Simon's Christian Church or Christian School. So, this has been a deferred site plan or, excuse me, rezoning, and it also has a companion site plan application, SP twenty-four-seventeen. Both have been submitted in notice for this meeting. The biggest change in this is a change in the footprints and the design of the master plan. So, the previous iteration proposed a twenty-four thousand square foot addition. This current proposal is for eighteen thousand-six-hundred-and-eight square feet of addition on the existing site of the school. The proposed is for, the main thing changing in this proposal is that playground would be on the lots added in, in the Glen Haven area. Here is a zoning exhibit. And here is the site. And these are the specific amendments that have been added to the rezoning. More specifically, the adding of a permitted use for school facilities, gymnasium, recreation fields, infrastructure and parking. The addition of school and gymnasium parking requirements. The required gymnasium parking spaces will be discounted by a factor of fifty, considering that the gymnasium and schools' academic facilities are not expected to be at full capacity simultaneously. To modify the buffers for the district to be in the locations shown on the revised exhibit and to add no buffers other than a six-foot fence or masonry wall that is required adjacent to the Oak Street right-of-way parcel zero-four oh-five oh-seven-seven. So, that would be this parcel right here of unopened right-of-way, as well as others as noted in the staff report. So, this was the previously proposed and approved PD amendment back in two thousand and three, two thousand and twenty-three, excuse me. And this is the amendment proposed, shown as I read two slides prior. And these are your highlighted amendments to the PD, also in your packet that was provided. I will also note that the packet was revised to show this plant development text today. What was previously in there was the, was an old revision from the previous. So, that has been updated to reflect what is currently being proposed. So, here is what was proposed in the old plan submitted last year in June. So, as you see, there are multiple different areas of improvements as well as multiple lots that were included in the rezoning. Here is also a portion that was shown in the old plan. If you take note, this yellow square is where the proposed new playground would be. So, here is what has changed since. So, we have the expansion of the structures been moved to the existing site. There will be no development and no rezoning for the lots in this section or this block of Glen Haven. So, these will remain as R six. The expansion will only be in this area. No structures will be proposed or currently no structures are proposed on this site. Only grassed area and playground for the children. And the addition on the rear that was proposed has been removed as well and the only expansion will be in this area of the site, on the existing school property or the existing school site. And here is your buffer exhibit, showing the change or the proposed twenty-foot buffer along Glen Haven, right here. And we did receive numerous public comments and opposition. And these are your possible motions. We do have representative from the schools here as well as from Robert Civil.
Any questions for staff?
Chris, you did provide us with all those comments that were received, right?
Yes, those were emailed to the I O planning.
Make sure we received them all. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. On the agenda I'm looking at that the chairman just read, there's fourteen lots. And what you just showed us, only four lots are gonna be rezoned. The other ten were removed. Is that correct?
Approximately, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you go back to one of the photos, Chris, please? One more, right there. Where it says the playground is gonna be, is that three-oh-one and three-oh-three Pine Street? That address?
Yes. Yes, three-oh-three and three-oh-one.
I'll wait for the applicant.
Any more questions for staff? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
At this time, would the applicant like to come speak?
Hi, I'm Taylor Haley. I'm an attorney representing St. Simon's Christian School and this is Wesley Frank and he is with Robert Civil Engineering. Jake Clemmings was not able to be here tonight. So, as Chris summarized for you, we came before you last year with a site plan and a rezoning because our school is, has grown tremendously in firsting at the seams on our existing facility. And so, the prior plan was really, you know, taking into account that that growth was gonna continue at that rate that we were seeing. And after we came forward with the original proposal, we heard concerns from the neighbors last year. We met with them onsite multiple times. We've offered to meet with them. We've worked together with the commercial neighbors in the PD text and the residential neighbors and tried to pare this down to the plan that would meet the school's needs with as little impact as possible on the surrounding areas. The PD text that we're currently zoned for, our existing campus, allows all of the commercial uses on our school's campus. So, us pulling out and creating the track C limits not only the property that we're bringing, you know, proposing to bring in, but it limits our existing campus to school-only use. So, as it stands currently, you know, we could sell that property to somebody else that could use all of the uses that are in the PD. And so, we pulled this out to track C so that it would limit the encroachment of commercial into the neighborhood. It would be the school uses. And then, we pared down the amount of property that we were bringing in to accommodate. So, we took away the, this is a site plan issue, but we took away the two-story building, keeping the gym on our existing footprint. So, that proposed building is on our existing campus right now. And so, only the playground and kind of a recreation space are going to be on those two lots. And then, in order to leave Glen Haven as undisturbed as possible for right now, we took out all of those other residential lots. We have never planned to have ingress and egress to the campus through Glen Haven. In fact, we want, for our own campus security, we want that area to be fenced and limited to like emergency access only. So, all traffic would still go off of Cocina Circle. There would be no campus entrance on that backside. And the use that is proposed to go in that area is a use that playground is, already exists on our campus. It's just slightly on the other side. So, we're not bringing a new use to that area that is going to be markedly different from what already exists on our campus. We have a hundred and seventy-five students right now. They are not all outside, all at the same time. We have to use the recreation space in a balanced way. Actually, we think with the introduction of the gym, it may reduce noise and other impacts to the neighborhood. So, let me see if there's any, we just, our plans are to narrowly tailor this as much as we possibly can, leaving those other lots residential. But we are remaining in that existing PD text because we, we still have to use Cocina Circle for our entrance. And so, we are part of that community on the other side and we work closely with Sea Island to make sure that we're dovetailing our plans because Sea Island and the school both exist well on Cocina Circle right now. But we need to do that in a very planned way so it's safe and effective for both constituencies. So, do y'all have any questions for us?
I do. The other lots, the, in the red up there, what would happen to those?
We would just leave them as R six right now. I mean, we own them, but there are no plans for those at this time.
Is nothing five or ten years down the road or is that just up in the air?
Yeah, I can't commit what would happen five or ten years down the road. But we went back to the drawing board and said, what does the school need right now? The growth trajectory had tapered off a little bit. You know, after COVID, there was a huge, people were making a lot of changes in their children's education and then some things kind of settled back down and we didn't have as much influx. And so, we realized, okay, this is what we need now and so, we're gonna plan according for the growth that we see. So, we don't have any plans to develop those lots at this point.
One more question. What grades are in this school?
K four, so like a pre-K through eighth grade.
Oh, it is through the eighth grade?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But no high, no high school.
This may be a question for Wesley. How far is the playground proposed to move? Do you know the distance?
I don't have an exact distance on that.
Can you guess?
Taylor can answer that better than I can. Couple hundred feet, maybe?
Okay, thank you.
I was gonna say, if you could tell me a scale on the map, I could kind of estimate it. The playground is basically, you see where the writing is on our existing campus? Kind of just, kind of on the edge of the right side of the writing, sort of below that black arrow and it would be moving to where the above black arrow would be. I wish I had a laser pointer. Mark, correct me if I'm not seeing this right, but the playground is kind of right around here? And it would be moving to right around here.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
My mic is not muted.
I'm good.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you, sir. What, what are the playground hours of operation?
We have an after-school program. The school, you're not allowed to drop your students off before, on campus at all, before eight-fifteen in the morning. And they aren't allowed out there to that playground area until later on in the morning. They're kind of contained on the front side of the campus. And then, there is an after-school program, but you get in trouble if you aren't there to pick your kids up at five. Sometimes you're pushing it to maybe five-thirty, but...
So, what, what's the beginning time? I know you said they couldn't go up first thing in the morning. I'm just trying to get hours and central noise.
Well, I mean, classes, the school starts at eight-thirty, but kids are not out on the playground then. They're in their classrooms. When would be the first recess time? Probably nine-thirty or ten o'clock when kids are heading out to the playground area.
So, nine-thirty to five-fifteen?
Roughly.
Okay, five. Got it. Thank you. Okay, 5:00. Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. The existing, where the new playground is proposed, what type of fencing or what would it look like from the Pine Street side, if you will? If you, if I'm looking at the brown border all the way around, I assume that would be enclosure inside of the playground. So what would that look like for the residents of Glen Haven from that view?
The, the PD text says a six-foot fence or a masonry wall. We have been talking about doing even, I'm sorry, it's like I have to lean over. We've been talking about doing even an eight-foot fence or a 10-foot fence there, just to reduce the exposure. And try to minimize the noise and, but we haven't, I mean, the requirement is that it would be a six-foot fence or a masonry wall.
And your existing fence that is currently there in the, behind your school, that would just be moved back?
It's already kind of taken some hits from some of these storms with trees and branches falling on it. And so because we would be opening up the campus, we would be doing a new fence that would be, you know, a complete kind of perimeter back there. For the safety and security of our students. We don't want people being able to come into our campus without us knowing. So we want to respect the neighborhood. We also want to protect our kids and our students. So it would be a complete new perimeter fence on that backside.
Have you received complaints in the past about noise and activity at the school thus far currently?
Never until we've come forward in regards to this rezoning. And we have, the, I say we've heard complaints. I mean, we've seen comments on next door, you know, we've heard things. We actually hosted two site visits for commissioners to come and see. We also hosted a meeting for any Glen Haven residents to come onsite and see what we proposed. We've reached out individually to individuals that we knew of that had concerns. But prior to this, we had never received any complaints about noise. But any, anything we have heard, we've done as much as we can to go and solicit feedback from the interested parties here. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. What's the height of the existing fence there now?
Six feet.
Six feet. And it's just a chain-link fence with a screen, or is it?
No, it's a wooden.
Wooden fence?
Yeah, it's a wooden slat fence all along the back way.
Any proposed lighting for the playground?
We, the, the playground, we don't have a reason for it to be a nighttime destination. And there are no plans to do lighting above a fence line. In talking today at engineering, you know, I can't commit that we wouldn't do some form of lighting below the fence line so that people aren't just stumbling in the dark if they ever had to go out there for a reason. But, you know, we could explore like motion-activated stuff that would just sort of light the ground area.
But no like stadium lights or a ball field or anything like that?
No, we're not playing at that level yet. Maybe we'll get there one day.
And then what about access? You spoke about like an emergency access back there. Can you speak more to that, please?
We are just open to what the, you know, county and, you know, fire department or whatever may require. If we have to have a breakaway gate on the backside, you know, for the time when the gym is being constructed. I don't know if there would be a limited need to have access from that point. But as far as people coming in to drop off kids or staff, there is, we don't want access back there. We want one point in and one point out of our campus, and that's what we have in Coquina Circle. So we do not want access back there, and we had said even before, with owning that property, we don't intend to open Oak Street. So we don't want access back there, but we're open to what may be required of us, but we would want it as, only for those kind of purposes.
Thank you.
You mentioned that you guys had a meeting with the residents of Glen Haven, or you invited them to come. How many people came?
Maybe 10?
10, alright. Thank you.
And just to piggyback off that, what were some of the issues that were raised during that meeting, if any? Instead of the feedback you guys got based on what you're doing now?
I was not able to be at that meeting, but from what I've heard, some people were looking at the old plan, and so they had some misinformation. Some people were concerned about ingress and egress again. Some people are concerned about like thinking that the classroom building was still going to be there. Noise levels, which, you know, there is no noise ordinance that we have to meet and comply with in this. But, so that's not something we actually are required to do anything about, but we did hear about that concern, lighting, I think. I don't know. There weren't any real new issues. I mean, one, one of the things is just Glen Haven wants Glen Haven to stay as it is, you know, don't want anything to change. Which we can sympathize with. I mean, we, you know, our campus was, we had a construction project that at first we had questions about. As it's come up, that project just ends up looking good, and, you know, it's turned out to be a good thing. But, so I can relate to that, of just not wanting anything to change. But we have taken those considerations into account and tried to, you know, tailor this down to the least impact on the neighborhood prior to the meeting, but.
Last question. Are there any issues brought up about the infrastructure and drainage and flooding at all? Is that brought up to you at any point?
That, the drainage issues were discussed at the meeting. We did also receive a letter that was sent today. I think it arrived at maybe like about 11 o'clock today from NSAFE Engineering that addresses some of those drainage concerns. I mean.
I can elaborate on that real quick. So Jay Clemmings obviously was at that meeting with Glen Haven, and I think from what he told me specifically, there's an existing pond on that parcel. There's an existing pond on that parcel to the right, and I think that's where some of the Glen Haven residents were saying there were some issues with flooding. And before it entered, or after it entered that pond, it goes into the, to the existing drainage system that's on that, that sliver of zoning amendment that we've got right there. There's some drainage ditches there. So from what Jake's told me, that's, that's what Glen Haven had expressed to him at that meeting last week.
Any further questions for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you. We're now at the public hearing portion of our meeting, and I'm going to first open the floor to anyone that would like to speak in favor of the project.
Good evening, commissioners. I appreciate you allowing us to be here this evening and hearing us. My name is Mark Cock. I'm the headmaster at St. Simon's Christian School. 11 years ago, I didn't know that Georgia had a coastline, let alone an island named St. Simons. Most people on the West Coast have no idea that any of this exists. I didn't know the beauty of the live oaks, nor the white sandy beaches of the Golden Isles. And I didn't know that there was a wonderful school that existed named St. Simon's Christian School. That's because God was preparing me to move from Tempe, Arizona to St. Simon's Island just a few short months later. Although not passionate at the time about SSCS, I've always been passionate about Christian education and the need for it in our culture. Our motto at the school is guiding hearts and growing minds, and that's what we do every day. We educate the youth of the Golden Isles while pointing them to Jesus every day and through everything that we do. When I moved to St. Simons in the summer of 2014, I found a school that was an intimate family of teachers and just a mere 92 students. Coming from a school of several hundred students in the heart of a big city, it was a welcome change. We collectively cheered when we achieved the milestone of 100 students enrolled. And we cheered again when we saw God fit, when God saw fit to allow us to get rid of the two trailers that the middle school was in and build a proper building for them. And to enjoy a nice big multipurpose space to hold chapel and to eat lunch. Through my nearly 11 years at SSCS, I have been blessed to have had a front row seat to see God grow the school to its current enrollment of over 170 students, and to see God provide funds to renovate our main building to accommodate more students and even purchase the land we now seek to develop. We are very thankful to God for giving us an opportunity to purchase this land. And as I always say, God isn't making any more land on St. Simons. With the recent growth comes new challenges and needs. We have a need for more space for students to work in small groups, space for music, art, and computer classes, and a new larger space for our nurse to care for the physical needs of our growing student population. And of course, a gym for us to, that allows us to hold PE and to host volleyball and basketball games. The club has been an amazing partner to allow us to grow our athletic programs, but now it's time to bring those events onto our campus. I've always felt like we have coexisted well with our neighbors. Sea Island has been a good neighbor to us. They have been very conscientious of the school throughout their building project, and we intend to return the favor. We've also had a good relationship with the residents of Glen Haven that have been very conscientious and conscious of how we could impact their community as well. And we hope to continue to be good neighbors with both Sea Island and Glen Haven. I've been blessed to have been led to St. Simon's Christian School all those years ago, and am blessed to see how God continues to provide for the needs of the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Rebecca, and this is my husband Eric Davis. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. Eric and I have lived on St. Simons for 25 years, and we both own businesses and maintain offices on the island. We're both deeply active in our community and serve on numerous boards and committees. We have four amazing children. Our oldest turns 18 on Thursday. And our youngest are 11-year-old twins who currently are in sixth grade in middle school at SSCS. They've attended there since elementary school. To say that we're pleased with our experience at St. Simon's Christian would be a vast understatement. We have witnessed the school grow by leaps and bounds over the years. And it's exciting to see a waiting list of students and families wanting to attend. Not only is the school providing our children with an excellent education, but it's also equipping them to become lights and leaders in the community as adults after graduation. SSCS has a proven track record from its 30 years of existence, and it boasts over 300 graduates. The headmaster, Mr. Cock, is a strong advocate for having our children serve and grow outside of the classroom in the local community. Gaining hands-on experience in serving and communicating with adults is a priority for him and the staff. While the educational component was a huge factor in our choice of this school, the way that St. Simon's Christian reaches into each student's heart and cultivates them into faith-centered, well-adjusted, loving individuals is unparalleled. It's beautiful to watch this develop in my children as well as their classmates. A true ripple effect that's going to impact this community for generations to come. The saying "more is caught than taught" resonates strongly at the atmosphere at SSCS. The staff functions like a small yet mighty family. Each morning, they start by praying over each child's desk, seeking divine insight and patience, I'm sure. Working in a small facility has been extremely challenging for the staff, yet they have navigated it beautifully. They collaborate effectively as a team, which is another testament to their character. Every square inch of our facility is used with purpose upon purpose upon purpose. The school has adapted to serve several multiple functions showcasing its organizational strengths. It's basically like a transformer. It goes from one thing to the next. We are in desperate need of this expansion. Our current facility is bursting at the seams. SSCS offers year-round extracurricular sports and activities for the students. Our twins love participating in baseball, basketball, chess, and the school play, and of course, playing on the playground with friends. We all know the importance of team sports and extracurricular activities for youth. However, it's been a challenge for us without a proper gym or auditorium. By providing athletic opportunities, we are increasing the male enrollment in the middle school and helping the boys stay engaged. Imagine the impact this expansion will have with additional classrooms and a gym. These precious school years are some of the happiest and most memorable times in life. The friendships and experiences that we create, we've all seen last a lifetime. This request is not made lightly. It's been prayed over for many years, thoughtfully considered, and we are so grateful for this opportunity to grow and let our light shine. Please vote yes to this expansion, allowing our local youth and community to flourish. Thank you. Sorry, I wanted to like yell on the microphone, so I didn't get the ding.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Scott Stylen, president and CEO of Sea Island Company. I wanted to come and express my support for the school. They have been a great neighbor to us. They have made an impact in this community. They will continue to do so. They will be a great neighbor to us in the future. They will be a great neighbor to Glen Haven. This makes sense from a zoning perspective. This makes sense from the school's development perspective. We have worked very closely with the school in building our team member housing project, which we're nearly complete with. I, I can tell you, at any instance where either Sea Island or St. Simon's Christian School has had an issue, we've had good dialogue. We've resolved it quickly, and we will continue to do so and be good neighbors. I just thought it would be remiss if someone from our company didn't come up and express our support for this project, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Ramon. This is my wife Stephanie Ramage and our youngest daughter Everly. We moved to St. Simons back in 2013, and we moved down here for my career. Since then, my wife has become a teacher at St. Simon's Christian School. All three of our kids go to the school as well as our needs. I'll say that over those 12 years, I had numerous opportunities for my career to take me somewhere other than St. Simons. In those 12 years, the reason that we stayed was because of the school. So that may be a good thing, may be a bad thing if, you know, people see me around the community, but we'll leave it at that. We've, we've always stayed because we've built a community within the walls of that school, even back when Stephanie was teaching in, in some of the trailers that we had. When I think about the job that you guys are tasked with and sort of why we're here, I think about the legacy of some of these decisions that we're making. So not only are we, you know, making a decision to build a new building or to build a playground, we're making a decision to continue the legacy of the school. I will say that we've had the privilege over the last 12 years to actually see some of the first students that Stephanie taught actually become adults and productive members of the community. And what I will say is the legacy that was built within the walls of even the trailers that are on the school is playing itself out in our community now. So I think that, I don't know the zoning codes or the drainage issues or anything like that, but when I look at the decision that you're making, the decision that you're making is to allow more students to get that same learning environment and be productive members of our community 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and be sitting in these seats to continue making those same decisions later on.
And I'll add just a little to that. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak. And I stand before you as a dedicated. And I stand before you as a dedicated teacher as well as a parent of our beloved St. Simons Christian School. It is truly a place where our mission is to guide hearts and grow minds. It has lived out every single day. Our school focuses on more than just academic education. It is a nurturing ground for spiritual growth that prepares our students to serve God and their communities well. In my 10 years as a teacher at St. Simons Christian, I have had the honor and privilege to see the impact that our school has not only had in our community, but also in our state and in our world at large. We have former students who are going on mission trips, leading worship on college campuses, as well as many leadership roles. The biblical and academic foundations laid by St. Simons Christian School are what our current and former students all have in common, and it is why I continue to choose St. Simons Christian for my own children's education. It is imperative that we have space to continue preparing our current students for the plans God has designed for them, and I'm here to advocate for that expansion. An expanded campus will enhance our ability to guide hearts. Our students' spiritual educations are at the core of what we do, but we lack the space to fully engage our current students in these vital activities. We want to provide our students opportunities to deepen their faith and strengthen their relationship with God. Some examples that we could use additional office space for in a gym would be a larger place for chapel, rooms for Bible study groups, as well as our Bible Buddies program where our middle school students encourage and mentor our elementary students, as well as space for pull-out groups when we need to meet the individual needs of our students. Furthermore, by expanding our campus, we can introduce new facilities that will enrich our students' educational experience. Imagine a dedicated art center and a gym where they can express their God-given talents. These additions will not only enhance our curriculum, but it will also help students to discover who they are and their identity in Christ. I urge you to consider the immense benefits that expanding our campus will bring. It's not just an investment in bricks and mortar, but an investment in our future of our current students as well as future students and God's kingdom. With your support, we can continue to guide hearts and grow minds and make a positive impact in our community and in our world. Thank you.
And that's why she's the teacher and I'm just the finance guy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Commissioners of the Commission, appreciate y'all and all y'all's work that y'all do for Glen County. My name is John Sprock.
Sir, I'm going to need your speaker hat and microphone, please.
Yes, sir. My name is John Sprock, and this is my wife Poppy and our girls Izzy and Phoebe. Izzy's in school right now. Even though Phoebe's wearing the jacket, she's not there yet, but soon to be. We are residents of Glen Haven. We are just a few roads over, over on Holly Street, and we love living in Glen Haven. It's an extremely kid-friendly neighborhood to live in. And thanks to you, the Commissioners, who put a playground right in the middle of Glen Haven, it's made it just a lovely place. It's a young neighborhood that's bursting at the seams with children. And I had a, just not to be repetitive, so I'm not going to say what other speakers have already mentioned, I just want to mention two things to the Commission. The first thing I would mention is the safety of students. And so, if you think of, and I really appreciate the President of Sea Island being here, but if you think of the amount of people that are now coming into the circle wherein you come into St. Simons Christian, I find it a little disturbing that the children are seeable from those towers that have been built. And so, I think it's very wise and prudent to move the playground from where it is right now to just a little further back behind the building, just for the safety of children and to deter any kind of unwanted attention. And the second thing I would like to mention is just to repeat that Glen Haven has just been bountiful with youth. And if you go through the streets of Glen Haven on a normal day, you'll see all the moms walking kids, all the kids playing on the playgrounds. It is a lovely and a vibrant place to be, and we're really glad to be there as a family. And very, very for the proposed amendments to the gym. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the project?
Hey, my name is Brown Igne, and I have joined the school board in the last year. I have four children and two grandchildren. I've lived on St. Simons since 2012, and we had the blessing of discovering the school from a fourth born. And been there three years since COVID. Just looking at basically what they're asking and the changes from the original proposal, even most of the addition is actually going up slightly instead of even more cost that we have in, we use the land, as well as just the buffering zone. My oldest daughter and her husband, that have my two grandchildren, have sort of made in their plans, they bought a house that needed a ton of work to be near there as well as be closer to us, you know, as grandparents. And so, it's a great resource. Definitely want to respect everybody there, but we're just grateful it exists and would just ask for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of the project?
Good evening. I appreciate what y'all do. Thank you. Jean DeRosa, and I live at 219 Pine Street. I'm speaking tonight with the hope that our neighborhood will not be surrounded by new school buildings and a playground for the St. Simons Christian School. Any of you who say you're in favor of this expansion and rezoning request live somewhere else. I have never been reached out, solicited, feedback, none of that. The other night, there was a meeting at the school that was word of mouth, and so, that's a little frustrating that no one's ever asked my opinion. But anyway, this is just what I wrote. At 10:30, the screaming on the playground begins, the coach yells, the whistle blows, and I can hear almost every conversation as well as shrill and constant screaming throughout my house. I hear the bell that calls the kids back into the building. This screaming continues till about 5:30 or 6 o'clock most nights. Now, the proposal is to bring the playground closer to our neighborhood, and I believe the rezoning request is only the start of the encroachment. Once this is approved, I feel like we're sunk. The school can come into the land that they now own, and I'm afraid build exactly what they want behind every house on Pine Street. We've heard that a high school has been proposed. Last Thursday, the machines for the Sea Island apartment started at 6:48 a.m. as construction crews start work early. They work on Saturdays and Sundays and sometimes as late as 9:30 at night. The constant truck beeping and construction commotion will go on for years. The engineer for this project wrote on the proposal that this would be in harmony with the character of the neighborhood because this will be a continuation of the existing school that is already located on parcel 0414401. Nothing could be further from the truth. How is this expansion in harmony with the character of our neighborhood, and why do we need a tuition-based school to expand into our neighborhood so that, as he states, additional opportunities for education will follow? No one has really addressed the impact this request will make on the residents of Glen Haven and, most importantly, Pine Street homes. The Realtor wrote this about my house, "An incredible cabin in the woods unlike anything on St. Simons Island. This home is so secluded, you'll feel miles away in the country somewhere. Enjoy nature as you relax with your morning beverage on the wraparound deck. This is still true if I sit on my deck before 10:30 or after 6 o'clock at night. My house was shown during winter break, so all was very quiet. This noise goes on all summer long. I work online, so I'm subject to all of this during my workday. Now, the school is asking us to put up with more of this as the new nighttime activities will bring traffic and lights for the proposed gymnasium. Many trees will be coming down to accommodate this gym, and of course, more as the future buildings will be built. These mature trees that come down can never be replaced. So, again, on this beautiful island, the trees will come down and the buildings will go up. I've not seen any plans for a buffer, a berm, or the replanning of fast-growing trees to absorb the new lights and new buildings encroachment. A vinyl fence was mentioned as a buffer, which I'm afraid won't mitigate any of this noise or lights. Many people come to St. Simons for the tree canopy and the live oaks as they are so beautiful and unique to this area, and they also supply wildlife with places to live. I fell in love with my house as it was surrounded by two sides, by mature trees, and just a lot of green. I've put quite a lot of time and money into updating it as I felt this would be my home for life and hopefully a home for my girls to inherit. Another byproduct of this construction will be even more litter on the causeway as construction crews make their daily commute into our space. Dead animals on the road will continue to increase as their habitats are destroyed. The mice and rats that live in the forest behind us will find their way into our homes. We have zoning laws in place for people like me, people whose everyday lives and savings and peaceful existence will be impacted by your decision. I'm urging the IPC to vote no to this rezoning request. You've been elected because people trust that you will make the right decision for the people as well as the schools and businesses. The right decision would be to keep neighborhoods complete and not allow any more businesses to creep into our zone, R6 neighborhood." Thank you.
Thank you. You can come forward.
Hello, my name is Sue Cannelly, and I live in Glen Haven. As far as this goes, at the February 13th Christian School public meeting, I asked what type of a rezone and what code it did fall under. I was told PD text. I will get to that. Mark Cock, the Christian School's headmaster, explained that after the past seven years when the school was built, the class size had gone from under 100 students to almost 200, and more space was needed. I understand schools that expand and do well get recognized and compensated. I don't have a problem with that. What is proposed is an 18,000-square-foot building at 35 feet height added on to an existing school, new soccer field, and things that have been already mentioned. Restrooms, hospital lights, and emergency-only driveway going out to Pine Street with lock gate and fence being put up. Mark mentioned night games for visiting team events also, so that means night lights. Here are the ramifications to Glen Haven, which is the largest residential density tax base on this island, should be listened to and protected. We will lose our property values and safe neighborhood immediately. This sets a precedent of future neighborhood rezoning because the Christian School and financial supporters, the major construction to a flood zone will cause new flood patterns and impact infrastructure. A future commercial driveway onto Pine Street in our future. Empty nighttime, large parking lot, unsupervised, no protection from possible fence-jumping offenders. Well, Sea Island Deployers always so use this parking lot for overflow. My biggest argument against the Christian School rezoning is the type of rezoning being requested. A planned development text. The definition is a development where the associated code of restrictions, other density requirements can be modified and applied to the whole development instead of each individual lot. So, the lots are bought, but then they can also just be rezoned under one time, and continued expansion of planned development would be part of that. Glen County Master Plan Section 723 states, "With PD districts approved for less than three acres, the site plan submitted with a zoning request shall be the approved site plan. The site plan approved by the planning commission, as a site plan smaller than three acres, shall be valid indefinitely." That's what has me. Indefinitely is open-ended and forever. Both the present school property and the new property in question is a forever open-ended development site, no matter who buys it, how many times it flips into sales and purposes through the years. With a PD zone rezone, a warehouse can come in, or a hotel, or more Sea Island employee houses, or something much worse, like an expansion of the Dunbar Creek sewer treatment plant. Let's just go wild with that. It is documented that the sewer plant also is operating beyond capacity. It's just a suggestion, maybe down the line, but what if, what if the Christian School in two years again hits their student capacity? They don't have that two-story building that they were talking about for classrooms, so I could see that happening. And they sell their five-plus acres to move to a given property, just for instance, on the north end. Whoever can sell, whoever they sell to can now build anything as planned development is open-ended forever. And with a PD designation, planned development is a type of eminent domain. They both need the same things, the power of local government to taper rezone private residential property and convert it into public use. This is not about the children. There are children on both sides of the fence. We need to promote and protect all children, of course, but I don't want devaluation, overbearing traffic, and crime at our private homes' front doors because of the unadulterated mass development and rezoning of this island. If you rezon private homes and properties without consistent public knowledge and conduct, multi-property purchases for progress, for resort employees, for a school, for parking lots with no thought of stewardship and no thought to our island neighborhoods, no thought on impact or precedent, or to what you're doing or causing, then your envisioned Glen zoning ordinance for St. Simons Island is to be something else, possibly a Key West, Outer Banks, Jacksonville. I am asking this committee to stop this Christian School planned development rezone and stop using the PD zones as a land grab on our islands. It's not about the children. It's about zoning PD that's forever, and anyone after the former owner comes in can put whatever they want there. So, you could have a warehouse sitting between our homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for hearing us. My name is Antonina Begala. I live on Atlantic Drive in Glen Haven, and I find it kind of interesting that this new rezoning map happened today, so we did not have the opportunity to even know that they had taken out these lots. My problem with this whole thing is Pine Street is a dumpster fire. It is so narrow, there's so much overgrown everything everywhere, that if one truck parks on that street, you have to go to one of the little side streets, sorry, go to the little side streets just to get around the neighborhood. This is not a place for an entrance or an exit for construction or emergency vehicles. There's just no way. This is a very tiny street. The other part of this is, I'm really confused. How does the school know what the Sea Island dormitories is going to affect them? It hasn't been finished yet. You're adding how many people to that site? And then, you're adding more children to the neighborhood. And I personally have a nephew who is a baseball player. I have gone to these games for 21 years, and let me tell you, when you go to these games, the little kids go to the playground. So, saying it's going to end at 5:30, 6 o'clock, if there's a night game, I guarantee you, the little kids are going to be on the playground. So, it's not a 10:30 to 6:00. It's longer than that. And are they going to do plays in this new gym? Are they going to do other things that are after hours? Excuse me. Just as a note, a screaming child's decibels is 85. Normal is 70. My friend Jean lives with 85 every day. And now, you're going to expand it, and you're going to add more kids. I just feel this whole process with this new thing coming at the last minute, and that the fact that the Commissioners have already put it on their agenda, it just says to me, nobody's listening. And I'm hoping that you guys will listen and hear us. This isn't about the kids. This is about our life. This is about our property and how we have to live. But it's just not, this is all kind of coming. Glen Haven, I live in Glen Haven. I didn't get any notice from the school. I didn't even know about it until Jean got me involved, and that was only last week. And what I've found since then, I'm not happy. But we're Glen Haven. We're kind of like the little dump. We have a playground, and it's great. But if you allow them any kind of egress at any point, even beyond today, you're going to endanger people, because people want to go on Atlantic Street so they can make a left, because there's a light. So, that's going to come in the future, because getting out of It's right there, a congested area, and it's very hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Brian Derry, and I am here on behalf of some of the Glen Haven residents, myself. I work for InSafe, an engineering firm, and I am the one that submitted two letters at the previous meeting back in June and for this meeting tonight. In general, I want to bring back two points that were brought up by people tonight.
Sir, we're going to need to still stay close to that mic and keep leaning back.
Okay. The commissioner over here mentioned that there was a difference in information in the number of lots from what is proposed and what was actually being presented. The gentleman behind me mentioned that this is new and posted today. From our perspective, what we want to make sure is that all of the information can be presented in a uniform fashion so that it can be reviewed and determined specifically as it relates to stormwater issues. When I was hired initially, one of the first things that we looked at was researching the area, and we did a lot of research on the stormwater issues in St. Simon's Island as general. There's been infiltration issues, there's numerous newspaper articles, and it's an ongoing issue. So that was one of the things that we wanted to really focus on. Between that and the new Sea Island housing project and the construction in that area and this proposed construction area with ongoing flooding issues, we're concerned about what those long-term issues will be. From our perspective, what we really want is to make sure that a full data package can be presented and it can be reviewed before this is approved. Further, one of the things in the own report, it states that stormwater issues haven't fully been evaluated for this, they're going to be evaluated later, and if necessary, changes will be made. From our perspective, these things take weeks and months to go through, so we would like a full package of all the calculations and all the stormwater issues to be presented so they can be evaluated and determined if it's going to exacerbate some of the ongoing issues. In closing, I want to make it clear, as an engineer, I'm all about education, and I went to a private school myself, so I understand this is not about the school. What we're trying to ensure is that the stormwater is evaluated, that the ordinances that exist are put in place, and that they're upheld so that they can protect the residents as well as the environment.
Good evening. I apologize for the clothes. I came straight from work. What I would like to do is just ask the commission to consider some things as I've been sitting there, listening to both sides. And coming from the school itself, they were speaking about the original plans for a two-story building.
If you could state your name, please.
I'm sorry, Von Becker. I'm a resident of Glen Haven.
Thank you.
Sorry. So they talked about the original plans with a two-story building that they removed off of the plans. My thought is, why did they remove it off the plans? Is it still in their mind to build that building later on, once they get it rezoned? That will allow them entirely to, once it gets rezoned, they can do what they want with it. Seven times, they stood up and mentioned the word currently when they were asked about other proposals for a building. Currently, it's not being proposed. Currently, we're not looking at it. I don't even need to say it, seven times, they did. So what is their future for that playground? I personally have not seen anything that explains also what is going on that playground. Is it ball fields? Is it playing equipment, like gym equipment? What is planned for there? Something for you guys to consider. Something else to consider, they talk about a six-foot fence. Six-foot fence, all well and good, maybe, but if they go with a masonry fence, there is no stipulation as to the height of that masonry fence. That masonry fence, as it is stated in this proposal, could be a two-foot masonry fence. There is no height stated on that. I believe that it should be stated on there, how high, how high that masonry fence would be. We want some type of, maybe written agreement or written word from them that they are not still planning and they don't plan in the near future to put a two-story building right there. Where is the construction equipment going to travel onto that tract from? That construction equipment is not going to fit down Pine Street. Are they proposing to come and bring the construction equipment that's going to work on that tract through the school? Or are they going to bring it straight down Pine and Palmetto to get there? As it is right now, our street is at capacity. When the, when the paint store down the road gets a delivery from an 18-wheeler, they have trouble making any of the turns through there. In fact, they're running over the new playground in that, that area. They've already broken the sprinkler system several times there in the playground. So those are just some things that, that I would appreciate you guys putting through your, you know, through your group and, and to consider yourself. I, I think that, to be honest, it looks like there's something underhanded going on here, honestly. Looks like they want to rezone it, and then in the future, they do want to expand it. I understand that, but it's zoned residential, and I believe it should be kept that way. Thank you.
Is anyone else that would like to speak in opposition?
Robert Vogt, 117 Harrison Point. So obviously, I'm not in Glen Haven. I'm here to worry about my friends in Glen Haven. So I came loaded for bear with the old plan because I didn't think the tone of it was very accurate at all, saying that it's just text change, PD, you know, there's really not much change. Changing zoning from residential to something else is a very big deal. It is not nothing, which is the way the, the last year's plan was worded. So it's unfortunate we didn't have the current plan until today. Having seen the change where a buffer of those lots is maintained to Glen Haven, I think that's a good thing. However, I also worry, as others have stated, that that's only the current plan. So I would worry about what's going to happen in the future, as, as others, I'm sure, are worried. There are ways to protect. There are conditions, there are deed covenants, there are ways to hold that land in a little, in more permanent status of, you know, let's call it a buffer, one way or the other. So I would ask your, I'd ask you to think about that as, as the two sides sort of, you know, work this out.
Thank you.
I live in Dunbar Creek, not in the creek, but it's called Dunbar Creek. It's the next development next to Glen Haven. I spend a lot of time there. I also have a lot of friends there. There are just two things that I wanted to mention that seemed that I hadn't intended to actually say anything this evening, but after hearing the testimony, if you will, it, it's notable to me that everybody who is for this project is basically for the school, and I'm sure it's a really good school, but this is not a moratorium on the school. It's a question about land use and appropriate redesign and replanning that is being submitted to you as a planning commission. It's not the Department of Education. I just urge you to please consider seriously the opinions and concerns of the immediate neighbors when you're considering this application. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll close the public hearing portion of this. Would the applicant like to address any of these comments?
Good evening, Commissioners again, Wesley Franks, Robert Siling Deering. I will, I've wrote down some notes, I'll address some of the questions I think are valid, and y'all can ask me if you think there are any more, and Miss Haley's here as well, to answer some more specifics about the school. So one thing that I did write down, as far as ingress and egress off Pine Street, I think Taylor mentioned that earlier, that there's no intention for that to happen with the school. And as far as construction, I think that can definitely be coordinated and only accessed through Coquina, so that, that limits access on that Pine Street side. As far as the trees, we've got an active tree survey that was done, completely for the site. There are no live oaks greater than 24 inches on any parcel, so that's a requirement of the PD text to protect those trees, and there are none per the, per the survey that we've got completed on both the existing school tract and the, the tract in the north that we're trying to incorporate. Even the lots that were, were surveyed that are out of the PD text, but were surveyed as well, and there are none there. As far as the, the process, I know there were some questions about, you know, buildings in the future, additions and so forth. Again, there's a process that the county has, which is the site plan process, which is hopefully what we'll be getting to next after this application. Any building addition that would be added in the future would have to come to the IPC that y'all would have to vote on with any addition that they may have coming up or, or planned in the future. So there is a process for that. And as far as the fence, I, I wrote that down as well. It does state that it's six-foot height masonry or wood, so six feet is the minimum requirement there. Do you have any other questions that I can answer that?
Yeah, I do. It was mentioned that there's been no stormwater calcu- It's been mentioned that there was no stormwater calculations done to date on this project and impact it may have on the stormwater system. Have y'all done any sort of calculation yet?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for bringing it up. I was going to elaborate that on the, the site plan, but yes, at this point, we have evaluated the, the drainage for the proposed development as it pertains to the infrastructure downstream. I can elaborate to that now or at site plan, so we, we've done that. And like I said earlier, from what we've been told from the meeting that we had for the Glen Haven, there is an existing pond on the east side of the property. From what I've been told through Jake Lemmings, who was at that meeting, that's where some of the issues have come from, and that is upstream of our, of our development.
I wanted, I wanted to make two points of clarification. The comments that the incorrect version was not made available till today, that was not by us. There was no effort on our part to submit inaccurate information. We submitted the version that is before you on January 6th or 7th, and it's been available on the community development portal. I think perhaps the link in the agenda may have been wrong, and that's what was corrected today by the county staff, but we made no effort to, you know, hide what we were presenting. It's been public record since January. The other comment made about planned development, once it's zoned, planned development, it can just be anything, a warehouse? Planned development, as you know, is a customized zoning. So we, that's not accurate. The zoning, we actually, as it stands right now, our campus has a lot more uses available to it. We are restricting our current, what we're seeking to do here today is restricting our current campus in this new property to school uses only. So it can't just, someone can't come in and decide they want to do a warehouse unless they came back through and did this exact same process and sought to amend the PD.
I've got a question for you. Just to further drill down into that, these changes you guys are proposing for Track C and the uses on the planned development text, it looks like you're only proposing to allow items BB and II as permitted, which are off-street parking lots and parking decks and school facilities, gymnasium, recreational fields, infrastructure. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
And if they might want to change something, do something besides that, they'd have to come here for additional rezoning?
Yes, sir.
Additional public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I've got a question, just something that was brought up about night games. What, what is your typical?
The facility is, the, the fields are not regulation size of anything. They're not regulation soccer fields, there's not room for a regulation baseball field, there's no outdoor games. Our indoor sports, basketball and volleyball, that would be participating in the gym, our current schedule is the girls typically play at 4 o'clock and the boys play at 5 o'clock. So even if it is a night game, they're done by 6 o'clock or, you know, 6:30. We, we don't have a late-night schedule, you know, in our current schedule, but there are no outdoor night games.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then just to piggyback off that, in terms of night games, and one of the concerns was using the playground while a basketball game or some type of activity play would be going on, is that something that y'all would consider not doing? Or would the playground be closed? Or is that something that you would consider to appease residents?
I, I don't want anything like that written into the zoning because I think it is, then it would not allow for flexibility in the future, but we have been and want to continue to be good neighbors to the Glen Haven residents, and we will work with them to come up with, you know, policies that would make sense for them and for the school.
Thank you.
One other question. Would you commit to a certain type of fence tonight?
Is, is there a type being proposed, or are we just?
Well, I know there's, the zoning proposes six-foot wood or masonry. You guys mentioned maybe eight, and I know there's concerns about the fence, and thought maybe it might be nice if we could just go ahead and get that resolved and you could decide and people knew what the plan was.
Are we allowed to amend, or if they request, we are allowed to make a modification? I, I wish I had like a minute to confer, but.
Please do.
Okay.
Please do.
The headmaster said that he had actually been speaking to a fence guy today, and he's in the process of getting quotes. We are willing to commit to a minimum of an eight-foot wood fence, with the possibility we may be going up to a 10-foot wood fence along that back perimeter, but we're, you know, waiting on the quotes and feasibility for that. But we would increase it to eight feet if that would please you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Do y'all have any other questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Since we're committing to things, would you commit to absolutely no construction vehicles off of Pine Street? vehicles off of Pine Street during the building of this gym?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
All good?
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question of staff I'd like to get some clarification on.
Same.
Yes, sir.
With regards to the current zoning, and I know it was mentioned in one of the public hearing comments, that if the school decides to go to the north end of the island and sell this property with this new zoning, it would open it up to X. Based on the current zoning, if they decide to go to the north end and sell this property, what is the property zoned for? What can be built on the property as it stands without any zoning, rezoning of it?
So these uses outlined right here are what could be on the property, so the mixed commercial units or uses, excuse me. I can't see all of them, but I do see what's outlined here. And that's if the zoning were not to change.
Okay. Now, just to clarify, if the zoning is changed?
Only school usage would be allowed.
Just limit it to school?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have something for Chris while you're up here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I looked at the playground in Glen Haven, the existing playground that was built on, I think it's Atlantic Street. I didn't notice any posted hours on the sign. Are you aware of any noise complaints the county's received about kids using the playground?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. If these additional lots that are, that were removed from the previous proposal, they were in the previous proposal, they've been removed from this proposal, if they wanted to do something besides what was allowed in R6, the applicant would have to come back in front of the county commission, I mean, in front of the county again, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Any commissioner discussion?
I'd just like to say that I hear the residents and I hear the concerns of Glen Haven and surrounding communities, but there's a thousand things worse could be on that property than a Christian pre-K to eighth grade school. And I'm sorry if, you know, the kids laughing and playing on the playground is disrupting, you know, your peace and your house, but it's a pretty fantastic thing, I think, to be able to hear. And, yeah, that's all I've got to say. I'll make a motion if, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of proposed zoning with modifications that there will be at least an eight-foot fence surrounding the, where the zoning text requires a fence.
Would you add in the?
And no parking on Pine Street during construction.
No construction access.
Or access.
From Pine Street during construction.
Thank you.
I will second.
So just to confirm, that is no, that is an eight-foot fence?
At least an eight-foot, at least an eight-foot fence.
And no access from Pine Street?
Or parking.
For construction.
For construction.
For construction. If the county determines that there needs to be a, like a crash gate back there for emergencies, that's okay. But no, no access from the general public?
No public access.
Or construction.
Do you second that?
Yeah, I'm second.
Got a second on it. All those in favor?
All those opposed.
Okay. Passes? We'll now move on to the next item. SP-24-17, 1060, Coquina Circle Site Plan. Consider Site Plan approved for new building additions and infrastructure improvements at St. Simon's Christian School. Property is owned planned development, PD, District ZM 1754. A companion PD amendment rezon application, ZM-24-15, has also been submitted for this property. Property is located at 1060 Coquina Circle, St. Simon's Island, Parcel 04-14401. Jake Lemmings, Robert's Civil Engineering Agent for St. Simon's Christian School, Inc.
Good evening. Christopher Carey, Planner, Glen County Planning and Zoning. Before you tonight, we have a site plan for St. Simon's Christian School. The proposed addition is for 18,608 square feet.
Excuse me, Chris, if y'all could please go outside and have a conversation, please. Go ahead.
Yes, the previous iteration of the site plan was for 24,572 square feet, and they're proposing a 25% reduction from what was initially submitted. Here's the site zoning map. Here's the old site plan, just to highlight, this wing over here has been removed, and there have been revisions to this phase as submitted. And here is your current site plan that is being proposed. This hashed area is where the expansion is to be. And here's a zoomed-in version of the site plan. They're showing a 25-foot modified buffer, which is what was proposed in the rezoning. Also, proposed underground detention, if required, for storm drainage, and your additional parking in the grassed area for the soccer field. And also, there is no parking proposed in Glen Haven with this current development for the site plan. And here is an elevation of the new gym. And we did receive public comment and opposition. And these are your possible motions. And that is all from staff.
Any questions for staff?
I do. Chris, once again, all these comments that were received were forwarded to us correctly? Correct?
Yes.
Could you explain to people who may not be aware, could you explain to people who may not be aware, the difference between the previous item and this item?
Yes, it is a 25% reduction.
No, I apologize. No, the rezoning versus the site plan.
Yes, so the rezoning governs the use of the land, the site plan is the actual use of the land. So that is what is being proposed as in new structures. Any footprint greater than 5% on an existing commercial use is required to go through site plan approval, or if there's a change in parking calculation.
Thank you.
And nothing proposed in this would have anything to do with whether or not the previous rezoning passed, is that correct?
Correct. There would need to be a change. The parking did change in the PD, which would change the parking requirement for the site, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
However, that could be remedied with a variance if they chose to do that.
Okay. So are you saying that a variance is not needed with the?
Correct, because the proposed, well, the proposed zoning changes the parking calculation.
Okay, all right. So with the rezoning passing, the parking is not an issue for a variance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Wesley Franks, Robert's Civil Engineering, here to request approval of the site plan as presented. I know there are a couple of questions. Mike, we had one earlier with regard to drainage. I know Jake. Jake Lemmings had met y'all on site and a couple of other Glen Haven folks as well. I know one of the things that had came up was the drainage and what we would analyze at this point, what we're required to do at this point, obviously with the site plan. We have analyzed the drainage for the improvements that are proposed currently on the site plan to incorporate that into the downstream infrastructure. Our analysis currently shows that that system can accommodate that runoff from the proposed development. As far as the process of when we provide that information to the county, typically that's at the construction plan process, so we'll provide a drainage report along with our construction plans, showing how we're handling other stormwater ordinance requirements on-site. But that analysis showing that downstream infrastructure can support the proposed development will be included in that analysis at that time. I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Where does this drain to?
It ultimately drains to the marsh on the east, the west side of the project, so it goes through the team member housing project, through a series of drainage pipes there, through the Sea Island parking lot, and ultimately discharges just to the west of that into the marsh. And there's like a marsh hammock there, and then there's an access road that goes to the treatment facility. There's a series of quad culverts there that then ultimately goes back out into the river.
Thank you.
Yes, currently, like, at the school, is there an issue with storms and, or you noticed large puddles, or is there a drainage issue currently where the school is now and the areas around it?
To my knowledge, I haven't been informed of that.
No?
We had to do, the school had to do some, when it built the existing soccer field, it had to make some modifications to drainage. If I'm not mistaken, there are actually pipes that are under, under the soccer field. We also coordinated with Sea Island's project to make sure that what they were proposing was going to have capacity for our potential project, and it does.
Thank you.
Is anything now with the, in the current condition of the schools with their drainage that would be adversely affecting Pine Street?
No, not to my knowledge, because all of it drains to the south, and we would collect it so that there wouldn't be any drainage to the north, and the proposed, the proposed surface for the playground is going to be a mulch, pervious surface, so that would most likely be infiltrated. But, you know, when we go through our design plan process, if there's any grading that may push water there, we would account for it at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
And the pervious nature actually goes back to your other comment about the parking. So we actually meet the required amount of parking spaces without that PD change that was made, but 19 of them are not officially counted because they are on unpaved surfaces. So we're trying to keep surfaces impervious for the drainage thing while providing adequate parking, but those 19 are not official spaces. So we really meet the requirements on-site for our parking.
Okay.
Wesley, when you guys get to the civil phase of this and submit it to the county, will you guys have to meet with the county engineers to go over the drainage calc and will they have to approve them before they sign off on the plans?
Typically, what we do when we submit a construction plan application, there's a subsequent drainage report that's submitted as well with the construction plan, and the county reviews both at the same time and provides comments to us, are there any items that we need to address?
Thank you.
I have a question, and I want to direct this to either Mr. Gentry or Mr. Hartman out there. What happens if, when this is all built, what happens if there is a drainage problem in the neighborhood? What happens then?
Yeah, I'll speak. First of all, once we accept the drainage and close out the property, then it'll be the responsibility of the county to make any repairs that should occur. But it's up to Mr. Hartman and his team to review any of the packets that the engineer of record submits to make sure it does meet the county's requirements, meets all the stormwater requirements for both quantity and quality, before we even allow the project to begin. So, Mr. Hartman?
Yes, just to reiterate, the Robert Civil Engineering, Wesley Franks here has done a good job responding to questions tonight. When we get to the construction plan, we comb through this like any other development we would, and if there's anything that has us not feeling good about this, or something that doesn't seem right, we do not accept it. I have a team of engineers that goes through the design process and the review process, and that would be our same process we go through through any development on St. Simon's or in Glen County here. So, as Mr. Gentry says, it would become a maintenance issue for the future, and our Public Works team would handle that if there's any maintenance issues in the future. Our engineering team is focused on design and construction through private developments and our own public projects that we have.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing portion, and anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposal?
I'll just state that I think the people that spoke in favor before kind of understood that these, it was one decision. I don't think they realized it was two separate things before you, so if those can just be referenced again, all the prior statements?
Noted. Thank you. Anyone like to speak in opposition of the proposal?
Good evening. Yvonne Becker, again, just some things for you to consider. I understand Mr. Torres says there could be worse, absolutely, but this isn't your backyard, it's ours. One of the things you need to consider is you've been talking about the drainage problem. We already have a drainage problem with our brand-new Glen Haven park. We love the park, but there's a huge drainage problem there already. It floods just with a simple 45-minute storm out there. That was the, that should have been the responsibility of the county to make sure that didn't, that didn't flood. Unfortunately, I believe that our county is overtaxed in many ways. A lot of our employees are overtaxed, engineers are overtaxed. They miss things, they don't see things. If this happens with the school, we're going to have a good old drainage problem, all right? Something else to consider, already Dunbar has to have rebuilt their septic system. Our septic system down at the, at the end of Palmetto Street is overtaxed. We've gone down, the septic system has gone down three times in the past eight months. Now you're going to put another huge building on there and tax it with a lot of people coming in for the, for the games. I understand, you know, it's about growth sometimes, but also it's about the infrastructure. And the infrastructure on this island is not keeping up with the growth. Now you're going to put a huge building on here, you're going to tax it with the drainage, you're going to tax it with the septic system. Does, is the septic system going to be able to hold this capacity when they have these tournaments and these games in these buildings? when they have these tournaments and these games in these buildings? What's going to happen to our septic system?
Thank you.
Brian Derry within SAFE again. The two things I would like to make sure we come back to are some overall drainage issues that have been occurring. As has been noted, there is drainage and flooding in Glen Haven as it exists. There's numerous articles about drainage and flooding on St. Simon's Island in general that have been in the newspaper, it's very public knowledge. From our perspective, we just want to make sure that the calculations are looked at. As noted in my February, or my June seventeenth letter from last year when this first came up, two different engineering firms had questions with regard to the stormwater calculations for the Sea Island. We have concerns that that wasn't done properly. We have requested formally to get those calculations and were denied those calculations. So from our perspective, what we're asking you to do is allow us to review them in advance before this is approved. The commissioner on the left made a very valid point. What happens if it's approved and then it starts flooding? By that point, the cat is out of the bag and it's a difficult problem to solve. It would be prudent to look at those calculations in advance and make sure that they're correct before this is allowed to happen. Another point that I want to make sure that we, everybody understands, it is downstream to some degree. But this is also heavily influenced by title. So there are going to be impacts in both directions, and that needs to be looked at as well. So from our perspective and what I'm asking and what we are asking to be done is that those calculations be reviewed in advance of this approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who did, you said that you requested the drainage calc's and were denied access to them?
Yes.
Who did you request them?
Roberts Engineering.
Okay, not the county?
No, we specifically reached out to Roberts Engineering on multiple occasions and were denied. We were told formally, they were not required to provide that information to us, to be reviewed.
Thank you.
Roberts Engineering is a private engineering company. They're, this is another private engineering company. They don't have to give those calculations. This is a, Sea Island Housing is a private development and the school is a private development. This is not a county project. So they do not have the right to give those calculations or plans to another engineering company. They're competitors of each other, there's no legal right for that. Just wanted to make that statement as the county engineer.
I've got a question real quick. So, but if they requested them from the county, do you have any obligation to give the calculations out?
We've had multiple open record requests and we've given, when we have open records requests, we give what information we have available. And we take those requests very seriously. We do not have any obligation other than, you know, that would be, you know, that's, we give what we can. That's, that's, that's the, that's the, that's our procedure, so.
Right, so what you're saying is you don't have any obligation to get out, but if they did ask you, you would consider it?
If it's been sent through us through email or public record, then yes, we have to legally give that information to them. So I met with Mr. Derry on our project. The, what was called the Coquina Drainage Project. The county has since ceased to move forward with that project. So these are really just two private developments. And it sounds like they're both Roberts Engineering projects, so they're coordinating. Luckily, they don't have two conflicting engineers working on these projects. So they're, they're both the same engineers, so they know what they're analyzing. That's, that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My name's Jeff Kilgore. I have stood before this body a number of times, not the same makeup, and chastised you because you do not enforce the Georgia Stormwater Management Plan. You do not enforce the coastal Georgia Stormwater Supplement. Those supplements require at a site plan level that the drainage plan be submitted in conjunction with the site plan. And you routinely allow people to defer it until the construction phase. That information has to be available to you so that you can review it and so that the public can review it. So that the project that's there now that was developed by a developer out of Atlanta named Tarver had a Roberts Engineering Drainage Plan that failed. And the county taxpayers ended up having to pay over a million dollars to repair the failure because the water was puddling on Frederick Road in front of Taylor House. And, and so you need to understand that the public depends on you for enforcement. And if you fail, then the taxpayers end up having to repair it just as the Assistant County Manager told you. And so I would urge you to listen and enforce the existing law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Roberts, Robert's Civil Engineering, and I would just like to make a comment publicly that those statements were false. And whenever we do a plan, our engineers review it, stamp it, put our liability on the line. The county's engineering department reviews it, approves it. The drainage problems that the other engineers spoke to are upstream of these sites. Upstream of these sites. So unrelated to these sites altogether. And I'm confident that we've gone through the calculations on this site and the downstream site. Believe me, the downstream site has been vetted by numerous people trying to find problems with it. And everyone has agreed that it is compliant and that it's functional. And we see that with the recent rainfall. So just wanted to make that comment publicly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, it's Toni Begala again. I just have one question that, I don't know if you guys can answer or they can answer, but are those calculations part of public record? Or is it there a report that goes to the county that does not include the specific calculations that they used? I worked for an architecture firm for thirty years. I was a CFO, I wasn't an architect, but I knew enough of the language. So here's my question. Are those calculations public record? And your county people should be able to determine that. That's my question, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We will close the public hearing now. Would the applicant like to respond?
I made a couple of notes again, so y'all let me know if there's any other questions beyond these. So I believe the initial comment was, one of them was talking to, I guess referencing the availability on the sewer. So by the time this application has come to y'all, Joint Water and Sewer has reviewed this and have approved the plan and have the capacity to handle the proposed development. Again, speaking to the open records request, Mr. Hartman pointed out that whatever information we provided in the county with regard to construction plans and drainage report, which includes all of the calculations that we, we were showing on the downstream infrastructure is, is open to the public. And I can't speak to them getting that information, but like Mr. Hartman had pointed out, it was provided to the county for them to review and it includes the calculations to substantiate our design. Also, one thing I want to mention too, again, this is outside of our project scope, but on the downstream infrastructure that was installed and approved recently on the team member housing project, there were tide gates that were installed as part of that project to limit the amount of backflow into the upstream system. So that was something that was added to the plans as well. With regard to the process of documentation on the drainage, at this point for the site plan review process, it is not a required item to provide that level of detail. For this particular, I guess two applications, we heard the request of the commission and went above and beyond kind of what the requirements are just to kind of provide that documentation that we had gone to that level to substantiate the proposed site plan that we have here before you. And again, like I said, we'll provide that documentation with regards to the analysis and what that looks like in calculations when we submit the construction plan. So anyway, that was the items that I wrote down. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So based on your calculations, you're saying that you're confident that this building, the current neighborhood, the problems with flooding and things of that nature, it is thoroughly handled and been calculated and vetted, is what you're saying?
So everything from the school downstream, basically what we've looked at. Any upstream flooding, you know, that's something that we'll have to look at separately from our project. But from where we're looking at it downstream, we've incorporated all that into what we've done at this point, which will then be shown on the analysis that we provide to the county.
Any other questions for the applicant? I just want to clarify one more time with regards to the drainage. It's all downstream, so nothing on this property is affecting Glen Haven. Is that, say?
There's some existing infrastructure, I think, on that pond that may be a maintenance issue that's outside of the scope that would not be influencing what we're proposing here.
Okay, so that's something that would be addressed with?
Not with our plan. That may be something beyond what we're proposing to do here, that's an existing condition that would not be a result of what we're doing or proposing currently.
Okay.
And again, like Mr. Hartman pointed out, when we provide this documentation, they're going to review that. We'll address any comments that they may have. And if there's something that they want to see above and beyond that we provided them, we'll go to that effort to make sure that they're satisfied with those calculations.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Tarni over here.
Okay.
First of all, to address Mr. Kilgore's points. He mentioned a plan and a supplement about drainage. Are we, do you, do you believe that we're meeting our obligations currently?
So specifically with what Mr. Kilgore was talking about, I would need to review that to say a hundred percent because I'm not as familiar with that as some people. I believe we have a process in place that has been vetted over and over again. I believe the process that this commission takes and the board commissioners uses is lawful. So I don't think there would be anything to what Ms. Kilgore said.
Thank you. One other question. Once, if this passes and applicant gets to the construction phase and they, construction permitting phase, and they do submit the drainage calculations to the county, will those calculations be open to the public if they submit an open request?
So if the county is, if those items have been submitted to the county as part of the county's review process and an open records request was made, I'm not aware of any exemptions that would prevent disclosure of that. They're dealing with open records law, there is a list of certain types of records that do not have to be disclosed. And then the Georgia statutes are kind of rife with a bunch of other exceptions. Again, I'm not aware of any exceptions that would prevent that disclosure. And so I believe they, they would be public records once they're in the county's possession. What I don't know is if there were any specific exemptions that would prevent us from disclosing that.
None you know of, right. Thank you.
So I can answer that. I know I personally emailed the drainage report from December of twenty-three, even without an open records request. So that information has all been shared. Anything, just because of the Coquina Circle project itself, I can tell you that we've had multiple open records. So everything, anything and everything that the county had, it was presented both digitally. And we also offered to come by and review any plan sets that Roberts would have submitted to us, which is the engineer of record for this project, or for that project. So without a doubt, I can tell you that the drainage report has been shared with any and everybody who has asked for it.
Thank you.
We're an open book.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can elaborate on the process of getting records before you go to an open record. So if anybody has access to what is submitted to us. You go to our licensing and permitting, go to OpenGov, create an account. I think that's the most important thing to highlight, you have to create an account, doesn't cost you anything. Once you've created an account, then you can be, you're able to view files. If you don't create an account, you won't be able to view files. You'll see information on an application such as the application ID and a few other items, but you won't be able to view the files. But if you create an account, you're able to view the files.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve SP dash two-five dash one-seven as presented.
Second?
I'll second that motion. I'll second that motion.
Those in favor? Those opposed? It has passed. Alright. Thank you. Next item we have is TA dash two-four dash one, County Initiated Text Amendment. Consideration of County Initiated Amendment to the Glen County Zoning Ordinance and Subdivision Regulations to change references from Community Development Director and Community Development Department to Planning and Zoning Director and Planning and Zoning Department and for other purposes. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, John Gentry, Assistant County Manager. And I'm covering this for Ms. Leaf today. Basically, in the fall, we had a reorganization of the Community Development Department and basically split the department into two different departments, planning and zoning, and then building permits and inspection. And with that, there is some, some language, administrative language in our current code that we just need to change to who is responsible for certain improvements and review levels. And what this does is it creates a replacement of the Community Development Department to Planning and Zoning Department, or Planning and Zoning, Community Development Director to Planning and Zoning Director appropriately. So all of those, these two amendments that you have before you are just administrative corrections in replacing names one for one. We will have some additional language that has to be adjusted. We'll shift to not a Planning and Zoning Ordinance or a subdivision ordinance that falls within Mr. Hartman's realm that we'll also have to correct at a later time. But these are the initial two that we've got to change as part of correcting by adding those two departments. So I'm available to answer any questions you have.
Is this what they call housekeeping?
Just a little housekeeping, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the County Initiated Text Amendment, TA dash two-four dash one.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Mr. Gentry, no one wanted to stay for your presentation, I apologize.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.